January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one, City Council Meeting of Waynesboro. Few things I want to cover before we start the meeting. The first is citizens may participate in our public hearing and citizen comment period at the appropriate time. Being we're meeting on Zoom, you'll have to call in and be part of a virtual meeting. So the call in number is eight four four, eight four four, nine two zero zero. You'll hear enter your access code. At that time, you'll enter the number three nine, eight one, four five, followed by the pound sign. You'll hear the recording say question session has started. At that time, you'll press star, followed by the number six. You would, you'll hear you'll be, if you'd like to speak, press the number one. At that time, press the number one and you'll be added into a room where you'll hear an audio feed of the meeting. Please wait until the moderator comes on and tells you you can share your comments with the council. At that time, you may present your, your information for us for the public hearing. All right. With that, let's move on to item number two. Item number two is to adopt the meeting agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye and show your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all. Item number three is to consider the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye with a hand sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five oh. Thank you all. Item is matters from mayor. I've only got one thing that I'd like to bring up tonight and that involves one of our police officers. I would like to congratulate Becky Meeks, Captain Becky Meeks, I'm sorry. Captain Becky Meeks of Waynesboro Police Department for being awarded the two thousand and twenty Lambert Radcliffe Trainer of the Year Award. Captain Meeks is a member and leader of our crisis intervention team and she's been on the team since two thousand and nine. Captain Meeks and two other police officers formed that team in two thousand and nine. One year after becoming a member of the team, she became their first instructor. Since then, the program has conducted thirty seven basic CIT, which is a crisis intervention team training sessions, and had twelve trained the trainers under Captain Meeks' leadership. This award was presented by the New River Valley Crisis Intervention and New River Valley Community Service Boards. So it's quite a nice award to get for our police officer, our police captain. And I just want to thank Becky and I know the rest of the council would like to thank Becky for her dedication, not only to our citizens in our city, but the Commonwealth and other departments around the state. Thank you, Becky. With that, that's all I have for tonight. Does any other member of council have something they would wish to bring out? Dr. Haas Seder is waiting, waiting to get his report. I can see it.
I am. You know, this time it's a, a, an enthusiastic and optimistic notation that the Central Shenandoah Health District is moving into phase one B in terms of vaccination availability. And that includes folks seventy five and older. They are starting to give those vaccines out at Augusta Health, but as I understand it overseen by the Health Department. There is a website and I have it here, so let me get you the, the information. We'll try to get it posted to. It may already be on our website. The Central Shenandoah, so it's C S D H, Central Shenandoah, H D rather, Health Department at V D H. So it will lead you to information about getting signed up to get on the list. Now, it is not a direct line to the list to get a time or anything pre-vaccination, but it's the first stage. So I encourage people to start to look into that. Have somebody who's internet savvy help you get on there and get your name sort of on the queue. They haven't gotten many of them out yet. You know, they're rubbing it up, so hopefully within a few days, we'll hear more about lots of people getting on the list and getting their vaccines. But that is a, a great development, I think, locally.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share tonight? All right. Let's move on to item number six then. Item number six is to hold a public hearing and receive, and receive comment on the request of Riverbend Development applicant on behalf of Rossar Avenue Development LLC for a preliminary subdivision plat for a hundred, a two hundred and twenty acre lot residential subdivision on seventy point six eight acres track at Zero Tiffany Drive. Waynesboro Tax Map four dash three dash one one two. Following the public hearing, the council will consider introducing an ordinance approving the preliminary subdivision plat. Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You should be fairly familiar with this project, this subdivision. We had a rezoning not that long ago, I believe back in August that, at which this was approved. Now, at the rezoning, I told you that you, we did not have to address the details of the layout, but that we did have to address whether or not this would happen because that was sort of the moment to, what the city had full discretion. We're now in the opposite situation. You don't have much discretion. You've already approved the rezoning, so they have the right to a subdivision here of this magnitude. However, we can talk about the details of the development at this stage. There is an attached text amendment which goes along with this subdivision, so if authority with the council, I'll present both of those items. But they were advertised separately, so you'll have to hold two public hearings. And one is not dependent on the other. You may remember the location of the property is just behind the Grand Home Furnishings and Martins and Walmart down the southwest part of the city near exit ninety four. It's a large property. Again, it's our largest infill development opportunity. And it lies in sort of the middle of the triangle between Ludewitt Boulevard, West Main Street, and Rossar Avenue. The rezoning was approved in August of two thousand and twenty with a number of proffers. One was a conceptual site plan that the subdivision had to be in general conformance with. Another was a pocket park of at least thirty thousand square feet that would be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. There were quite a few traffic improvements and there was a large traffic impact analysis that was done as part of the rezoning. And there was construction of a multi-use path along the main road and then some land to be available to the city for future recreational purposes. Just to address each of those, their conceptual site plan staff does feel that the subdivision plat roughly matches it with some changes for topography and, you know, stormwater engineering and that type of thing. They provided the pocket park as shown on the original plat. They will be doing the traffic improvements as required. Also, the traffic study was based on a max build out of six hundred residential units. They're only proposing a subdivision with two hundred and eight units. And it'll leave some space for probably close to two hundred multifamily units, fewer than that in the future. So the max build out that they're going to get at the end of this is only, is going to be less than four hundred units probably. So they'll be well below the numbers that we saw on the T I A. And then the construction of the multi-use path, you'll see that when I show the plat. The land will not, the part that they're subdividing isn't in the area where that land that they designated for future recreational purposes is. And as part of the proffers, we maintain that they or the homeowners association would have to continue to own and maintain that property until the city and unless the city requested, which we have not. The subdivision has been renamed Creekwood Village. It's a by right subdivision with no waivers requested. That means that we have to approve it if it conforms to the zoning and subdivision ordinances. The roads differ just slightly from the original site plan because of terrain, but it still includes all the necessary connections that we discussed in the rezoning process. And the roads will comply with the city's subdivision ordinance with V dot standards and with the Virginia Fire Code. We have a multi-use path that will be built on one side of their main road through the subdivision in lieu of sidewalks on both sides. And that should be eight feet wide. And they provided on the side with the pocket park. So actually, I think will be quite a nice path. It'll be consistent through that area. The subdivision will create two hundred and eight residential lots with a mix of housing types. Originally, in the zoning plan that you saw, it was all single-family attached to sort of duplex type houses. They've lowered the number of those and instead they'll be including sixty two single-family detached lots as well as thirty six townhouse lots. So it'll be a pretty nice mix of housing. I think it will create for a better, better mix of options for people that are buying in this neighborhood. You can see examples. This is what the townhouses would look like. It'd be in sort of blocks of six or so. And this is what your single-family attached looks like. Two units attached in the middle and then single-family home lots. As you can see, they'll all be fairly close together mixed in. Now, for the proposed zoning text amendment, the applicant has requested a, an amendment to the zoning ordinance ninety eight point five point one point five. This deals with access standards and parking. And it states that for single-family detached, single-family attached, zero lot line houses, two-family duplexes and corner lot duplexes, the maximum width of impervious vehicular travelways, basically driveways, and parking areas located within the required front yard setback shall not exceed twenty five percent of a lot width. Basically, your driveway can't be more than a quarter of the width of your lot. This makes a lot of sense for most of those housing types. For all the housing types that were listed there, with the exception of single-family attached, they need at least a fifty foot wide lot. So twenty five percent of fifty feet, twelve point five feet, that's plenty wide enough for a driveway, so it makes perfect sense. However, like townhouses, which are not included in that list, single-family attached houses are meant to be built on narrower lots. In fact, we allow them on lots that's narrow with twenty five feet. Unlike townhouses, they are subject to the driveway width limitation. Twenty five percent of the width of these lots is less than the width of a typical car or less than a driveway. And so in order to provide a driveway, they would have to widen the lots and quite a bit that our ordinance doesn't, where our ordinance doesn't require them to or get rid of the driveways. This, it seems like a problem to us on staff because the code requires them to provide off-street parking. And we don't allow for construction of alleys that would allow them to put parking in the rear. So they need to provide parking spaces off-street. So somehow they've got to build driveways. And if those driveways can't be as wide as a car then, or as wide as a lane, then that's an issue. So the proposed amendment is just for single-family attached, just for this type, this housing type, which is two units attached to each other, to add a minimum allowable driveway width for narrower lots. Or twenty five percent of lot width does not allow for a single car driveway. The applicant has requested a minimum width of twelve feet. That would correspond roughly to the minimum width that you could get in your standard fifty foot wide lots and would allow them, that's the same as an interstate travel lane, would allow you to have a nice comfortable driveway for one car. The applicant, in our opinion, has satisfied all sections of the zoning and subdivision ordinance and therefore staff recommends approval. The planning commission also recommends approval of the subdivision on a six oh route. Staff also recommends approval of the text amendment and planning commission does as well. Again, this is a reminder, you'll have to hold separate public hearings for the text amendment and the subdivision plat. I'm going to pull up in just a second here the plat as it currently exists. Put that up while we discuss it. Are there any questions? For me? We have the applicant here as well. I'll get them to turn on their cameras in a moment.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Judee?
Look, I just have a question about the, the eight-foot shared use path. What was the, what was the decision point behind going to that standard, which is a deviation from a, a standard ASH O width?
I believe eight foot does comply with ASH O, or at least that's what we allow if you get rid of sidewalks on both sides.
Eight, eight, eight foot is, is a minimum, at least what the V dot standard is that it's eight foot minimum if you can provide justification for it. And so typically is that is, as an example, like the Augusta County shared use path off exit ninety one, we did an eight-foot path. And the reason for that was because of its largely serving remote or disconnected, disjointed, developing, emerging areas. Sort of a justification with that reduction to eight foot minimum.
I don't know that, I don't think we required a justification from them specifically, but I know it was pretty difficult for them to fit the path into the right of way. So that's probably what the applicant would say. I'm fairly sure this is eight feet. Actually, I need to.
I think, yeah, I think I read it. So I was just, I mean, I, I think it'll be fine. My, my only sort of tension point with that is that it's at the, at the, the totality of the development. Once the thing gets built out. And if it's as, you know, as much of a, of a neighborhood as it is a subdivision, that it'll, it'll fill more, you know, that you may sort of see that need, but, but again, I, I don't have, it's, it's not enough of a point that I would have an aversion. Just, just kind of wanted to see if there had been some conversation on it.
No, there wasn't. If I could get the applicant to turn on their screen. Ashley Davies is here. She's Vice President of Riverbend Development to represent the applicant. I believe she has their project engineer as well, if you have any more specific engineering questions.
Any questions for Ashley? You've done a great job, Miss Ashley. Nobody else questions? All right. With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I hereby open the public hearing. If you wish to participate in the public hearing, you're asked to call eight four four, eight four four, nine two zero zero. When asked for a meeting access code, enter three nine, eight one, four five, followed by the pound sign. Press the star six and then you'll be asked if you would like to participate, press one. And once you're in the queue, you'll hear the audio feed of the meeting. Wait until the moderator tells you you can speak and then you can share your comments with council.
Mr. Mayor, is this the public hearing for the subdivision request or the text amendment?
The, the sub, subdivision request, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one person in the waiting room and they could be here for any of the public hearings, so I'll go ahead and open this one up. And if that person would like to enter, as you stated, they should hear the prompts now.
Session has started.
If you're in the waiting room, you, the, please introduce yourself. Give us your name and your address and share with council what you want to share.
Okay, they have entered the Q and A session, so I'm going to go ahead and move them into so that you guys, you all should be able to hear them.
Okay.
Yes, am I on?
Yeah, yes. This is Bobby Henderson, the mayor. Can you?
I have more of a comment to make rather than a question.
Is this, is this some?
I live in Waynesboro.
Is this a reference to, to?
Expansion for Middle River Regional Jail. And I just want to say that before beginning the long expansive office of expanding our jail, we need to take a critical look at who they're incarcerating and why. And I think we'll likely find that most people incarcerated in the jail are poor and disadvantaged, are nonviolent offenders who've been on a court bail or not given that option. In addition to the plague that we see of racial disparity. And most of these people do not need to be incarcerated. And I believe would be better served in the community. I think we do a better job by investing in other programs such as education. And I believe organizations like Rise here in Waynesboro serves as a model for community education, uplift and service at the grassroots. They do so much and understand issues facing our communities more than anyone. And I think we do well to invest in an organization like this. We also need to invest in more in addictive and mental health services and to things like food insecurity. In short, I think we'd be better served to invest in ways that would help and uplift those who are at risk, offering human services and opportunities that can, that could interrupt the pipeline of jails that we see. And offer something more hopeful and substantial that could really change and improve lives. And that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Okay, just so the folks know that are wanting to participate in the public hearing, this is not citizen comment. This is strictly a public hearing involving the Rossar Avenue Development LLC preliminary subdivision plat two twenty, two hundred and twenty lot residential subdivision. We're not in citizen comment period. If you would like to participate in the public hearing, that's what this section's for.
No one else has entered the queue, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, is there a way that you can find out if they're here for the public hearing or for?
There is one other person that's in the attendees section, but they've not come into the Q and A. So I would assume they're either listening to the meeting or here for another section.
Okay. All right, with no one else here for the preliminary subdivision, I hereby close this public hearing.
Q and A session is over.
Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance approving the preliminary subdivision plat?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Seder. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. This ord- Can we approve this one tonight or is this one?
No.
No, okay. This ordinance will receive final consideration at our next business meeting on February the eighth.
Then we have to hold a public hearing for the text amendment as well.
Okay. We're going to hold, uh, I hereby open a public hearing to hear the comments for the text amendment involving Zero Tiffany Drive. If you want to give comment to the text amendment involving Zero Tiffany Drive, please call eight eight eight, eight four four, nine two zero zero. When you're prompted, enter three nine, eight one, four five, followed by the pound sign. You will press the, you will press star six. After you enter the room, you'll press one. You'll be entered into the room. You'll hear the audio feed of the meeting. Please wait until it's either the public hearing that you're wanting to speak at, we've got five tonight, or the citizen comment period at the end. This public hearing that we're in right now is for the zoning text amendment. Anyone in line for this, Mr. McCormick?
So the same situation as last time. Mr. Mayor, there's one person in the waiting room. I can go ahead and open up the question and answer and if they'd like to speak on the Zero Tiffany Drive, they'll be prompted to enter. And if not, they can feel free to stay in the waiting room to listen to the meeting or, or speak later.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
And they have not entered as of yet, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing on this matter. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary, oh no, let me move down. I hereby close the, the hearing. Is there a motion?
I see, Mr. Mayor, if I might interrupt, that's, I've gotten the language there a little goofed up. This is to introduce the ordinance approving a text amendment relates to the minimum lot width related to the driveway.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Is there, here no discussion? Say aye. Aye. Whoa, 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 whoa. No, no, no. This carries over till the next meeting too. I apologize. This will be heard for final consideration at our next business meeting on February the twenty first. Or, I'm sorry, February eighth. All right, we've got one more public hearing in this. All right, our item number eight is to, for the public hearing, to consider introducing an ordinance for section ninety eight point two point four of the code to add contractor's office to the use table and permit contractors offices by right in L I, H I and M X B districts and to add use of standards for contractor's office to section ninety eight point four. The proposed text amendment is initiated by city staff. Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify quickly that the proposal is actually initiated by the planning commission and it's to allow them by right in L I and N H I and by conditional use permit in M X B. So I'll move through the, the presentation here. You see a picture here of Blue Ridge Doors over on Charlotte Avenue. That's an example of the type of use that we're discussing. This would be contracting and servicing companies like HVAC, plumbing, electricians, framing windows, other construction companies. It's a type of use that generally requires an office space, a customer facing space of some kind for people to come in and out. Usually a little bit of parts warehousing, outdoor storage and then parking for their service and delivery vehicle. So it's kind of a a jack of all trades use. And it doesn't fit very neatly into our current zoning code. As it is, the zoning administrator has classified them as light industrial, so they are allowed only in light industrial areas. There are a number of them that are non-conforming and there are quite a few that are on light industrial properties over in the basic city area. Currently, as I said, they, they exist in a gray zone. Because of that, we'd like to add them explicitly to the use table because there's often issues about whether they could be retail or they could be whatever else. And so I'd like to add them to the use table more explicitly and allow them by right in the L I and H I zone, the industrial zone. Because they require smaller, less expensive sites and they don't need visibility from major corridors, they're often interested in older, smaller, they're sort of prime users for your small old buildings or small old commercial industrial buildings that aren't on main corridors, which is a lot of the kind of buildings that are scattered around the basic city area where we're trying to do the new M X B zone. This creates a little bit of an issue because aesthetically, they're really not ideal uses near residences. It's not really what you want to live next to. But they're also not high nuisance uses. They usually don't involve any kind of pollution or a lot of noise or, you know, they're generally working normal hours. And so there's something even issue of whether they should be allowed in, in that area. And because there are a couple of them that are already there, if we move ahead with rezoning, a lot of the area that we'd like to rezone to M X B will cause some of them to become non-conforming and that'll create a little bit of an issue with that rezoning. So to get out ahead of that, we would like to recommend adding contractors offices to the use table and allowing them by right- and allowing them by right in the LI and HI districts. We discussed allowing them by right in the MXB district as well. The planning commission was, wasn't comfortable with that and felt that they should, we should be allowing them by conditional use permit. That means that every time that one wanted to locate in one of those buildings, they would have to come to council for a conditional use permit. So that's not something that we want to use very often, but it's okay for uses that may be appropriate if you can kind of see what it looks like, et cetera. The proposal also involves adding some use standards, such as allowing vehicle and equipment storage only as an accessory use to an officer retail use. But we don't want to allow just, you know, a junkyard in the middle of this neighborhood. But we would allow some vehicle storage as a secondary accessory use. You can park the contracting vehicles there, et cetera, but would require some screening. That's the situation. Um, as I said before, we're hoping to bring you all a rezoning soon that would change a lot of the property over there to the new MXB zone, which we've been working on for that area. And we know that if you don't pass this text amendment, or if you don't allow these explicitly, that will make a lot of those businesses nonconforming. So for instance, this is, uh, Uslers Plumbing here, which is located, I believe on Dinwiddie, maybe the next street over. Here's Blue Ridge Doors, which is on Charlotte. That type of building exists. There's quite a few of those types of buildings and those types of businesses in that area. So this is attempting to figure out what to do with that exactly. If we allow them by CUP, we can issue CUPs for those existing uses, but any new ones would have to come to council. If we allow it by right, then, um, you know, that kind of use could go into any building that's in this district, MXB district. Uh, questions for me about that?
Mr. Jude, so what we're voting on tonight is to make L1 and H1 districts, add the, the language for the contractor's office in those districts and conditional use permit in the MXB district.
Right, and I, mhm. And this won't really change anything right now after your vote because the, uh, Laura already allows them in LI districts. That's kind of the, what we figured out, um, even with the gray definition. And we obviously don't have any properties that are zoned MXB yet, though we will have quite a few of them soon. So it won't change anything immediately, but it's, the bigger point here is for that MXB rezoning to be ready, have it cleaned up for that.
And Mr. Jude, following up on that, my recollection is that the anticipation is that those existing, uh, businesses, we will issue CUPs with the rezoning so that we're not chasing anybody away. It'll be more an issue of then if new businesses are looking to come in there.
Yes, uh, we have had some advice from the local council that we should maybe hold off on issuing CUPs for some of these things. But, um, it's gonna create some additional complexity, but it would give them the opportunity to seek a CUP. We may send them letters and ask them if they would like a CUP, that we'll, we'll do that free of charge for us now. It, nothing that, even if they were becoming nonconforming, it wouldn't chase anybody away because, you know, they'd be grandfathered. When you change the zoning on an existing use, that existing use has the right to continue until it closes or shuts down. But yeah, you're right, it would mainly be addressing new, new users.
Any other questions for Mr. Jude? All right. Uh, I hereby open the public hearing to hear, uh, citizen comment or public comment on zoning text amendment, contractor's offices by right. Uh, if you want to participate in this public hearing, you will call 844-844-9200. Once you hear the access code, enter 398145, followed by the pound sign. You'll be asked if you want to be, uh, your, enter the question and answering session, you'll hit star six. Then you'll be asked if you want to speak, to press the number one to be put in queue. Uh, you'll hear the audio feed of the meeting. If you're hearing the audio feed of the meeting, uh, and you're wanting to speak on the text amendment for contractor's offices, it'll be time to enter the room. If you're waiting for another public hearing, please wait and we'll announce, uh, when the time is to enter the room. Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir. So again, similar situation to last time. We have two people in the waiting room, so I'll open the question and answer for the, um, zoning text amendment for contractor's offices, offices. And if, um, the citizens in the waiting room would like to speak on this, on the contractor's offices, they can enter, should be able to enter now.
Anything, Mr. McCormick?
No, sir.
I hereby close the public hearing.
Q and A session is over.
Is there a motion to, uh, move the public, or the amendment for?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Eder. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Uh, this ordinance will be received for final consideration at our next business meeting on February the 8th, 2021. This brings us to item number nine. Item number nine is to, uh, presentation from Jeffrey Newton, the superintendent of Middle Regional Regi-, Regional, Middle River Regional Jail regarding the need for facility expansion and various concepts of, uh, expansion. Considering, uh, consider providing guidance to the city manager regarding the expansion of the facility. We had a, uh, work session before. Once we received this, I think council to take some time to, to think about what we're hearing tonight, but we'll, uh, let city manager know where we stand once we get all the information.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I might provide just a very brief introductory remarks for the superintendent. Um, his attendance, we appreciate this evening. It's currently the average daily population due to increasing incarceration exceed the operational capacity of the Middle River Regional Jail and prompts the member jurisdictions to consider expansion options for the facility. Uh, facility capacity is expressed in two separate and distinct terms. Rated capacity is determined by the Department of Corrections and is the basis on which state compensation board funding or state support for the facility is established. Operational capacity refers to the number of inmates that can be served adequately in a facility. Middle River Regional Jail has a rated capacity of 396 and an operational capacity of 600. Uh, both of these figures are original to the construction and opening of, of the facility in 2006. Key considerations in operational capacity include staff and more relevant to our conversation this evening, core infrastructure such as food service, medical service, visitation, laundry, and those common core, uh, facilities and, um, essential infrastructure of the institution. The average daily population for the jail for the calendar year 2020 was 843. Of those 843, an average of 37 inmates were on film electronic incarceration, uh, resulting in an average population in the facility of 806, which we note exceeds both the rated and operational capacities, um, for the jail. We should note further that, um, that 843 or 806 number are understated given efforts currently or ongoing to manage and reduce jail populations during the pandemic and public health emergence. Occasionally since 2015, um, populations in the facility have spiked to exceed 1,000. Um, the increasing inmate population places stress on the facility and the staff there. And at the same time, expansion solutions are expensive and contemplated during a time of economic recession and uncertainty due to the pandemic. All that to say, we recognize the staff, that the proposition of expanding the facility at this time is a difficult proposition for elected bodies and for the authority itself. Um, the Commonwealth has established structured process by which construction and expansion of local jails is evaluated and funded. Um, when Middle River Regional Jail was constructed, the Commonwealth contributed, contributed 50% of eligible capital cost. Um, presently, the Commonwealth contributes 25% of eligible, eligible expenses for approved projects. Um, this evening Superintendent Newton will, um, provide an overview of process and history here and provide some focused information about the various solutions, um, that the authority has considered. I would like to thank, um, Mr. Newton and his staff for their responsiveness to persistent pressing by the authority to develop, um, additional options, um, that balance, um, what is becoming an urgent need for additional space at the facility with, um, the obvious concern of, um, expense for expansion at the facility. And with that, we'll hand it over to Mr. Newton. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Ham. Thank you, uh, I'm, I'm hope, uh, everybody can hear me all right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully, this will work.
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Thank you. Well, again, thank you very much, uh, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me to speak this evening. I'm gonna walk through the presentation. Please, if at any time you have a question, stop me, and I'll be glad to address the question at that time. And then at the end, I'll, I'll certainly be glad to entertain any questions you might have. So we're gonna talk about the items that Mr. Ham introduced. We'll talk a little bit about the background, cover that briefly. I'm gonna talk about the process that you get authorization to expand from the Commonwealth, uh, review some of the historical work that we've done, and then, uh, bring us into where we currently are and what the status of the project is and what we're looking to have happen here in the next couple of weeks. This is a frame of reference in case anybody does not know where the jail is located. We're in Augusta County, uh, right next to the youth center. You can see the representative there, the Augusta County Government Center. That's right along Commerce Avenue or Route 11. So we're kind of in between Route 11 and Interstate 81, uh, right there in Verona. So as Mr. Hat mentioned, regional jail was, the regional jail was constructed in 2006. Original members were, of course, cities of Waynesboro, Stanton, and Augusta County. In, uh, 2015, uh, city of Harrisonburg and Rockingham County joined the authority as school members. As Mr. Hat mentioned, our rated capacity from 2006 and remains so today is 396. But the core of the facility, all those mechanical systems, food service, uh, HVAC, hot water, kitchen, were all designed anticipating that the jail might house 150% capacity, which is about 600 inmates. As you can see, we've, we've struggled a little bit with the number of offenders we've, we've housed. And in, uh, calendar year 2020, it was 843 with 806 being resident to the facility. You can see here on this slide, we've struggled even more in the past and, uh, rating, you know, with our, uh, peaking in, uh, 2019, housing 923 citizens on a daily basis, which is 233% of our capacity. So how did the process work? So what needs to happen is the authority needs to, uh, develop what's called a community-based corrections plan. That's the vehicle that we get approval from the state to, uh, add additional beds. The plan has two parts. There's a needs assessment piece, which looks at what the needs of the authority will be for the next 10 years. And in our case, that would be through 2029 because we, um, started this process back in 2019. That needs assessment determined that we would need, the authority would need 1,283 beds come 2029. The second piece of the community-based corrections plan is the planning study. And that's where you look at, okay, what your need is, how do we respond to that need? And so we're gonna look at some of the options from the planning study about how we would respond to meet those, those beds. So the authority, um, reviewed the community-based corrections plan and approved its submission to the Department of Corrections back in December of 2019. That document gets reviewed by the Department of Corrections and then gets submitted to the Board of Local and Regional Jails, what you used to call the Board of Corrections, but the legislature renamed that to the Board of Local and Regional Jails in 2020. That was reviewed by that board in September of last year and, and approved a plan for 400 bed expansion. So what happens next? Normally what happens is the governor would include that plan in his budget recommendation for the next fiscal year for consideration by the legislature. That did not happen this year. So we approached Senator Hanger and Delegate Avoli to submit budget amendments on behalf of the jail authority, which they have done. So we will be considered in this next legislative session as part of that budget. And we need, um, the project to be included as part of the budget to be eligible for that 25% reimbursement Mr. Ham talked about earlier. As the staff, we need to see some guidance from the Board of Directors of the jail authority as to what they desire us to do, whether we are going to do a project and what the size or shape of that, uh, project might do, might be. And if we are going to do a project, how the board wants us to proceed towards obscening financing. So here on this slide, we're representing some of the historical plans that we presented to the authority for consideration when we submitted the community-based corrections plan to the jail authority for their review and approval. See, they're fairly diverse in their, um, size. What, uh, what we asked the authority to do if they were gonna submit a community-based corrections plan was to submit a plan for the largest option because it's easier to scale a project down than it is to scale a project up. Once we got approval from the jail, from the Board of Local and Regional Jails, we could build something smaller, but we would have a difficult time building something bigger without going back and starting the process again. So in December of 19, as part of our community-based corrections plan, the authority did submit the plan considering option A, which you can see is a pretty significant price tag. In December of, uh, last year, or at our December board meeting, the chairman asked to put on the agenda for, uh, the architects and my staff to review with the jail authority what the options were. We did that. It was clear to me and my staff that there really was an appetite on the, uh, jail authority for a large project. So we took the project back and met with, uh, the architects and really redesigned how we presented the project, trying to reduce the project down to digestible pieces with focusing on, uh, these five key issues that are identified here on this slide. Obviously, we've got some renovation that we need to do because of the age of the facility. We want to focus on adding capacity and increasing capacity to deliver a good community correction supervision. We want to better address, uh, the folks in our custody that have an underlying mental health issue. Obviously, our real need is increase in capacity of general population, minimum custody beds. And then, of course, we wanted to expand our capacity to deliver good maintenance to the facility. So those were the overarching pieces when we developed our plans. So we recommended to the authority some renovation in the main facility. We wanted to address expansion of the kitchen because of increase in population. When we originally constructed the facility, we had, uh, professional visitation that was not completed. We wanted to complete that. We wanted to enhance security in our lobby for staff. We need to increase property storage for inmates because we designed the facility for 600 inmates for property storage, and we've got, uh, a number more than that, so we need to add some property space. And we wanted to move where our current magistrate office is. Current magistrate office, we have one here at the facility. It's inside the secure perimeter of the jail and is not accessible to the general public. And we wanted to move it outside the secure perimeter, make it more accessible for the general public. And then we want to repurpose, uh, that, that arrow that points to the new mental health area. That's currently our medical clinic. Part of the proposal is we want to build a new medical clinic and we want to repurpose that for service for, um, our mental health staff. It's not designed for housing of inmates with an underlying mental health issue. It's purely designed as an administrative space for staff. And you can see those renovations, uh, those are the highlights. It's about four and a half million dollars to do all that renovation that we have proposed to do. We want to expand our capacity to deliver, uh, good service to those in our custody with, uh, mental health issues. So we had proposed two different units, um, 48, uh, 24 individual cells apiece, about $2.3 million. You could build one, you could build two. It could house all the classification of offenders we have. This is the current schematic of the building. You can see where the highlighted areas are two areas of the jail that we You can see where the highlighted areas are two areas of the jail that were not completed when we originally constructed the main facility. We would propose to build those two units and classify them for service to folks with underlying mental health issues. Any questions? Minimum custody beds. Core need for the facility, we just need to expand our capacity to manage the general population of the facility. Proposal is to add a housing unit with dormitory housing, 192 beds, could house minimum custody or medium custody inmates. Again, the schematic of the building, when the architects originally designed, they sketched out where potential additions could be placed for the building. This is one of those spaces. It's west of what we currently, where we currently house our female offenders. And it would be four dormitories, 48 beds apiece. To address our growing need for community corrections capacity, we're proposing a separate building for 112 beds for folks that would work in the community and return to the jail at the end of the day in either a work lease capacity or a community service capacity, working for the jurisdictions or some volunteer organization in our community. The key piece about this facility, it could not be used to house minimum custody inmates. The construction standards would not meet that. It could only be used for folks that work in our community. And we're proposing to do that in the parking lot to the south of the main building. This is the main jail here. This is the youth center over here. There's space here to build that building right there. And support services. Remember, we talked about when we built the building, 396 rated capacity, but the core systems were designed anticipating 150% capacity. Historically, for the last four, five years, we've been well over 200% capacity. So, we need to create more capacity to serve that population. We need a larger medical unit to serve the folks that are in our custody with health concern. We need to expand our kitchen so we can easier prepare the meals we prepare on a daily basis. We need, where we place the laundry in the main building, we can't modify or change the current laundry, so we've got to build a new laundry. There just isn't any space inside the building where they put the laundry to do that. And then, of course, we need to respond to administrative space to create more office space for staff to be able to better serve the management of the facility. And the proposal from the architects is to build that, this is the current administrative area, is to build that just west of the current administrative space. It does not impact our ability to do any other additional building to the facility that some future authority may choose to do. It's not gonna be big enough to impinge on any of that. Last piece for expansion was maintenance and warehouse. When we built the original building, the maintenance facility was value engineered out of the project. We have a small maintenance building that's been added in the last 15 years. It just does not meet the capacity of the level of maintenance and support we need to have for the facility. And then, the warehouse space, obviously, is inside the main building. It's not big enough for us to buy in bulk and store in bulk, and so, we're proposing a combination maintenance and warehouse facility. So, we looked at a number of different options, a lot of cookie cutter pieces that you could pick and choose what you wanted to do. This is a potential project. We could do this, or we could do something different, or we could do part of this. But this is a potential project that we've laid out for the jail authority. It certainly is not the only option that is available if a project is chosen. You can see the cost of the project would be about $39.5 million. The street share would be close to 10. So, the authority would be responsible for about $29,600 million, $29.6 million. This would add 352 beds to the current 396 beds that we currently have. Questions about that? Cost assumptions. So, we're gonna show you a slide here in a minute that's gonna lay out what we think the additional cost would be if you chose to do that particular project. Mr. Ham mentioned about rated bed capacity. Rated bed capacity drives funding for staffing from the state. Personnel costs are based on how many folks we actually house at the facility. The other costs are about what the new additional space would cost as far as utilities and maintenance, and then, an estimate about what debt service would cost. So, this is what that project would look like come fiscal year 24. See, personnel costs would increase about $9.3 million. Other costs, that's the utilities, maintenance, whatever, about $2 million. Debt, 1.9. So, that 1.9 million is essentially doubling the current debt service payment that the authority already has for the current project. So, a $40 million project doubles your current debt service payment. So, for a total increase of 13.3 million, compensation board would provide you staffing defrayment of almost $5 million. So, the true net increase to the authority come 2024 would be 8.375. So, what's next? We prevented, we provided this presentation to the authority board at their December meeting. We had a special meeting. The chairman called on the 7th of January to look at the updated options that had been developed by staff and the architect. We're looking for some guidance from the authority at their meeting next week as to if we're gonna do a project, and if we are, what the shape and size of that would be. That drives then negotiating an architectural contract, retention of bond counsel, so that we could come back to the authority at our April meeting for approval of those contracts. And then, assuming that the project is included in the state budget, we'd be eligible to begin design July 1st. It's a pretty aggressive timeline. We've been working on a pretty aggressive timeline since I got here in June of 19. But even with that aggressive timeline, and assuming we get approval to proceed with any project, we don't get a new bed till December 23. So, we gotta deal with the population we've got for another three years as we work through this process. And that only assumes if the authority decides to proceed with the project. So, I wanna talk to you a little bit about criminal justice reform. There's been a lot of dialogue. The legislature met in special session last fall with a lot of work around this particular issue. And some of the criminal justice reform, I think, is going to directly impact Middle River Regional Jail. One of the key pieces of legislation that was passed was changing how earned good time can be earned by offenders that are sentenced to the Department of Corrections, potentially changing that from five days a month up to 15 days a month. So, the estimate is, and we don't know for sure, but the estimate is by 2023, that's gonna reduce the number of offenders in the Department of Corrections, about 1,400 offenders. And then, the assumption is those 1,400 free beds would be filled by offenders coming from local and regional jails. So, you do the math backward to Middle River, that may reduce our population by 60 offenders a day. The population projection for 2029 is 1,283. Population projection prior to that change was 1060 in 2024. So, we figure our population maybe, we need 1,000 beds come 2024 as opposed to 1,060. What other criminal justice reform's gonna occur in this current legislative session or next year's? I'm not really sure. An example would be if the legislature gets pretty radical and decides to eliminate mandatory minimum sentences. So, instead of a five-year mandatory sentence for a particular offense, it's a two-year. Or, instead of a 10-year, it's a five-year. I don't think that's gonna affect the jail because that person's still gonna come to jail and then work their way to the Department of Corrections. So, even though it may, in the out-years, have an impact on the number of folks in the Department of Corrections, I'm not sure what it's gonna mean yet for Middle River Regional Jail. But we're gonna monitor that and see. So, we need to increase capacity for community-based programs. We need a facility to do that with. And we need a creative solution if we're gonna do a project that provides staff here at the jail with the most flexibility to manage the future population, that we're not really sure what that's gonna be yet. I'm ready to answer any questions if you have so.
Hey, I got one here. What is the average type of offense that you get in your regional jail? I mean, what are those folks doing in your jail?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it runs the gamut, all right? So, I think it's important for everybody to understand that anybody that works their way towards a sentence in the Department of Corrections starts at Middle River Regional Jail. So, we can have folks that are in our custody for a misdemeanor, and we can have folks in our custody for some pretty significant felony offenses. And it runs the gamut. We can certainly provide some specific data to Mr. Ham that he can provide to you if that's what you desire. But it's, on any given day, it's hard to tell you what they are.
Mr. Newton, this is Dr. Oster. I've got a question as well. What is the average length of stay? Because it sounds like a lot of folks there are moving through the process. How long do you have them on average in that process?
Thank you, Dr. Oster. I'm not gonna be able to answer that question because it's difficult to assess, and it really depends on each individual case. As an example, if you're, if the offender's in our custody and facing a significant felony charge, they may be here four years, working their way through the criminal justice system. And then, we may have somebody in our custody 24 hours, waiting to make their bond. So, I'm not sure, I've never found utility in average length to stay at a jail because it really is individually, why is that person here, and what has contributed to why they're still here? So, I know that's not as responsive as you want, but I just, I haven't found the utility in the average length to stay, because I look at individual cases.
Fair enough. With your new, if we approve funding here, and you've got a new mental health wing, what kind of services are we gonna be providing with that mental health wing?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for asking that question. So, I think it's important for you to understand that we are not a mental health treatment facility. We don't provide treatment to those in our custody with an underlying mental health issue. We contract with the community service board. We have four full-time clinicians in our employ that are provided to us by the community service board, and we do that because we believe that somebody in our custody is gonna receive services from the community service board when they're not in our custody, and we should, we wanna connect those services, and that's why we contract with them. So, we do, we provide counseling services to those offenders. We provide group work, so there's group sessions, and they're all designed around coping mechanisms to better deal with the fact that they are incarcerated and working their way through the criminal justice system. And then, the clinicians work very closely with our psychiatrist, so we manage medication and ensure that the offenders in our custody are taking the appropriate medication, that they've been prescribed by the psychiatrist. So, we did a lot of work around crisis intervention, group counseling, helping folks better cope with the circumstances they have, and getting them on the appropriate medication. But we're not, we're not a treatment facility. And what we're looking to do with the additional space is just to provide, just to have better, more space and better space for that population.
Mr. Newton, Bruce Allen here. I retired from Waynesboro City Sheriff's Office 16, 17 years ago, so a lot of things have changed, and I've only been to your jail once or twice for tours, never served any time there. In the question of people there waiting for trial and people there serving their sentences, and you might have said this, and I missed it, but do you have a number of how many's actually sitting there waiting to be tried and how many are actually serving their time?
Generally speaking, now, COVID year is a little bit different because we've worked aggressively with the Commonwealth Attorney and the court to shift folks earlier from our custody. So, a lot of low-level offenders got put on house arrest or furlough. So, 2020 is kind of an odd year for us. So, generally, though, about 60% of our folks in our custody are waiting for some action from the court, and 40 are either serving their sentence or waiting for transfer for the Department of Corrections. So, it's about a 60-40 split. That's generally true. It may not be true today because of COVID, but that's generally what we're seeing.
And I heard you say, or it was told earlier, a lot of the people that would be normally sentenced to a state penitentiary are being held up now because they're overcrowded and not taking people because of COVID. But in my time, if somebody got more than 12 months, they stayed at your facility until there was a bed space available in a state correctional unit, and that's when we would move them. What percentage of the ones you say that are sitting there serving their time are ones that should be over into the state corrections now?
Well, today, our population's about 785, and about 1 in 4 of those folks should be in the Department of Corrections.
1 in 4?
Yes, sir.
And I think we had, we had the question earlier when we were, had a work session before this meeting. At that point, the cost of that person sitting here, normally, they would have been transferred into the state, and I think the cost goes there then. But now, if it's here, we're still taking care of it. We paying 100% of that?
Well, for a state-responsible offender, we receive $4 a day. When they get to the point where they're eligible to move to the Department of Corrections, we get $12 a day. It costs you about $56 a day to house somebody here. So, we're getting the short end of the stick. All right. I think that's all the questions I have.
I've got a couple of follow-up, but thank you for being here. First, to, actually, I'll go in reverse here. You mentioned a little bit about, you know, COVID being a different year for all of us and certainly your work, and that you had worked diligently with the judges and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to, for the, to reduce the overall population for lesser crime and vigils and those that could operate through ankle bracelet or home monitoring or otherwise work relates to what have you. I guess the question would be, I'm assuming that's a successful program, and, you know, would we, what your thoughts are moving forward to continue those efforts so that we aren't doing, doubling down on incarceration even once the pandemic is over?
Well, I think they've been very successful programs, and I think we have demonstrated, and we communicate periodically and provide periodic reports to the Commonwealth Attorney and the Court about who's out and how successful we are and things of that nature. And I think they are meritus of consideration for continuing past COVID. But that's not a decision that I can make. That's a decision that the court and the Commonwealth Attorney, I think, need to make, but I think we've demonstrated the ability to manage those programs, to manage them safely, to enforce the rules of the program. And the way you test that is you have some people fail, so you bring them back to jail. And I think that just reinforces the fact that the program is successful. So, we would be more than willing to expand those, but, you know, that's a decision that needs to be made by the court and the Commonwealth Attorney. I think as an example, in the spring, when COVID came, working with the Commonwealth Attorney and the court, we got our population below 700. And then, come July, we slowly saw our population climb up. To October, we were over 900. And so, when we had our outbreak here, we asked the court to stop people coming to jail who were self-reporting to serve sentences. who were self-reporting to serve sentences, asked the magistrate to be a little more aggressive with bonds. And so we've now been able to hold the population right about 800. So what's the difference between the spring and today? I think the difference is the low-hanging fruit, those low-level offenders from the spring got released. And we've got in our custody the folks that the Commonwealth Attorney in the Court think need to be in our custody. And so I think that's really the difference for us. And I think that's really truly representative of what we're going to house. So I don't think we're going to reduce our population another 100 with house arrests and, um, and work release because I don't think I have folks that, there's an appetite to put those folks out on the program. Now, in the future, there probably is, but...
Well, and that's, that's, that's where I'm a little foreshadowing a little bit is that I think, I know, I, I would imagine other members of council would be very interested to hear back from you in six months, you know? And then hopefully, once the vaccines are sort of hitting and that, you know, in what way could, why, might we serve as, uh, an advocate, uh, to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to, to, uh, to advocate on, on your behalf? If you're seeing positive outcomes, I think we need to be supportive of that. It helps, and potentially to help not only our community, to our bottom lines of our community, but more importantly, those that are, that would otherwise be incarcerated.
All right. Let, let me just say this, that, you know, Mr. Ledbetter has been a huge supporter. He's been very aggressive in looking at those folks in our custody and taking the appropriate action that his office thinks is appropriate. So I don't want to cast any aspersion on anybody that says they're not doing what they, they're, it's appropriate for their office to do. He's been, each of the Commonwealth attorneys that serve our jurisdictions has done a yeoman's job, uh, supporting our efforts to manage the population, so.
Absolutely. We've got the same opinion of them. So yeah, so you've done a great job for us. Question regarding, uh, that, that mental health wing, I think was mentioned earlier. And so you've got four full-time clinicians from, uh, under contract to be a service board. And then, so they then offer up recommendations to, uh, the, the, the jail's psychiatrist, right? So I, I, you know, I imagine, I, I've appreciated my colleagues' questions so far because I think it's, it's evidence that we've all heard more or less from, out of the same people, right? Because we're, you're, you're kicking, you're kicking off my questions one after the other. So I think that's great. One of the ones that came up was, um, whether or not the, the jail has a full-time psychiatrist or not. And so the ability to take those recommendations from the clinicians and to, uh, act quickly through medic, through medication or otherwise, or that would require a prescription. That, so I guess the question that I was, I was told, and I don't know if it's true or not, is that, is it, is, do we have a full-time psychiatrist there? And if we don't, if it's part-time, do you see that as a problem? What are some challenges or, or are things sort of operating? Would you disagree with, with what I've heard?
We do not have a full-time psychiatrist. We have a part-time psychiatrist. But I think, and it's one of the, one of the areas we look at each year in our budget cycle is, do we have enough hours of psychiatric service for the population we have in our custody? And we made some pretty significant changes in our medical service delivery in the last 18 months because we determined we weren't delivering the level of care. And the jail authority's been very supportive in adding additional medical staff at our request in our budget cycle because we didn't have the coverage we needed. But this is an area I think that we do have enough coverage because we're not a, a, a mental health treatment facility. We're really a facility that's designed to keep people safe and, and prepare, have that person ready for action from the court. So I don't think we need, for the number of offenders we have in our custody, based on my professional experience, I don't think we need a full-time psychiatrist. If we were a mental health treatment facility, we'd need a couple of psychiatrists. So, uh, but that's not our role in, in the criminal justice system. If we, as part of expansion, if we add that area for mental health delivery, we would look to add additional clinicians so that we could do more group work. We would probably increase the hours of the psychiatrist. But I'm not sure I envision a full-time psychiatrist. I've, I've run jails with 1,700 offenders and we didn't have a full-time psychiatrist there either. Now, we had, uh, more mental health staff and we may have had a nurse practitioner with mental health training, but we didn't have a full-time psychiatrist. So I'm not sure that we have the population that needs that.
Yeah, well, that's helpful. I mean, I think you, you've answered my, my, my question. And I think it's, 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 I, I'm taking it as a, as positive feedback that, um, should the expansion move forward, that, you know, again, with, with the, you know, I've heard some statistics as high as, you know, 20, 20, 30% of, of those under your care that, you know, may have mental health issues that, uh, that would, in, in the absence of receiving care and they're, if they don't receive that care and then they're released to the general population again, the recidivism, it contributes to the recidivism. And so, um, so one, I think there's one structural, uh, question that I think you've done a good job of, of, of helping me understand that with the expansion, there's that potential to expand clinicians and additional services. But then there's a, uh, philosophical role, right? Also structural, but philosophical role of the role of, of jails and their role in, in, um, medical services to, for, for mental health. And so that's, that's super helpful for me. And I think, um, would, uh, we'll certainly talk to my colleagues about, you know, what role we might play in, uh, in, in creating some conversations with our state leadership. So thank you very much.
Mr. Newton, do you know, have the statistics as to how many people that are incarcerated now? This is their first incarceration and how many are on repeat?
Uh, Mr. Allen, I'll have that number handy for me. And I'm not, uh, I'm not sure how I'm going to capture that for you. I could certainly answer the question, how many is it a first time at Middle River?
That's, that's what I'm talking about, sir.
Yeah, but I couldn't, I couldn't answer the question as to whether that's the first time they've been incarcerated because they may have been incarcerated at Alamo Charlottesville, Rockbridge, Harrison and Rockingham. So, um, let me, uh, let me think about your question and see if I can't feed back some data to Mr. Hamp about that for you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Newton, I have one, one more question for you, sir. And I, I appreciate your patience tonight and setting with us. I've heard from many constituents that our incarceration is double the national average. Any idea where that statistic comes from?
I would have no idea.
Is it, would you say that's a true statistic or is that?
I, Mr. Mayor, without knowing what the source of that data was, I wouldn't know. Certainly the fact that we're running at 200% capacity would indicate, would support that statement. But we have to understand the history of the facility. We built the facility to serve three jurisdictions. Now we're serving five. So we're going to have more offenders because of that fact alone. Generally speaking, I think nationally, the last several years, the trend has been that the number of people being incarcerated is falling off. It's dropping. Uh, this is a cyclical issue. Sometimes it climbs, sometimes it drops. But for Middle River, that doesn't happen to be the case. And it's hard to separate out the impact of, uh, accepting two new members of Harrison and Rockingham back in 2015 as to whether that trend would continue or not. I could tell you that, um, without, if you just pull out the number of offenders we have that we're housing for Harrison and Rockingham and just look at the three original members, we're over 150% capacity. So we'd be, there's more than 600 offenders here just from our three original member jurisdictions. So your facility would be kind of at its point where you'd be looking to build on your own if you hadn't accepted the other two members, so.
Thank you, sir.
It's a life cycle.
Anyone else have any more questions for Mr. Newton? Well, sir, I, I don't see anybody raising a hand or coming up. We want to thank you very much for coming in, talking with us tonight and spending time. I can speak for myself and I hope I speak for the rest of the council. It was very informative. You presented good information for us. Thank you, sir.
If anybody has any additional information that comes up afterwards in one of your work sessions, please just ask Mr. Hamp to send me an email. I'll get you, uh, the answers to your questions.
If you would mind if we could get a copy of your, of your presentation from this evening? That would be great.
Certainly can.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hamp, we'll get back with you after we've talked amongst ourselves and give you some guidance and advice from us, okay, sir?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item number 10, and that's to receive information regarding the renewal of the Augusta Regional Landfill Management Agreement and consider authorizing the city manager and/or the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Anderson, members of council, this is also a regional issue, but far less complicated and, um, not a financial consideration this evening. The regional jail is owned by the County of Augusta and the cities of Stanton and Waynesboro. We contract with the Augusta County Service Authority to operate and manage the landfill on our behalf. We have an agreement or a contract with them that expresses and documents the expectations and standards and duties, um, which we rely on the service authority to perform. That contract expired and it's necessary to renew it. The agenda briefing outlines in some detail of those responsibilities, broad responsibilities and expectations for the service authority. And this evening, I'm simply seeking authorization to renew that contract and grant authorization to either the mayor or the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Any questions for Mr. Hamp? Hearing none. Is there a motion to renew the, the contract?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye in a show of hands.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This motion carries 5-0. Thank you all. Uh, the next is to have another public hearing. Uh, hold a public hearing and receive comment on the city of Waynesboro seeking relief from Governor Nor, Governor Northham's H. House Bill 5005 Utility Disconnect Moratorium. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is actually a follow-up to a conversation we had at your January 11th meeting concerning the governor's moratorium on utility disconnections for non-payment as well as some coronavirus relief funds that have been provided to help folks who are struggling to pay utility bills. On November 18, Governor Northham signed into law House Bill 5005, which among other things placed moratorium on public and private utility disconnections for non-payment. The moratorium will remain in effect until the governor determines that the economic and public health conditions have improved or until at least 60 days after the declared public health state of emergency ends. The bill does outline a process by which a utility provider may file for relief from the disconnect moratorium if, in the case of a public utility, the provider's amount in account arrears exceeds 1% of its annual operating budget. Arrearsages include past due receivables that are up to four years old. And beyond that, the receivable is considered to be uncollectible. We've provided the council with some information that demonstrates that in the city water fund, we have arrearsages of, um, a little more than $159,000 against a budget of about $4.2 million or revenues of about $4.2 million in the fund. So our arrearsages are about 3.8%. And certainly exceeds the 1% standard. And likewise, in sewer fund, we have arrearsages in an amount of $153,000 against a $6.1 million revenue budget. So the arrearsages there are about 4.1%. So overall, in the two utilities, our arrearsages are about 4%. In order to obtain relief from the moratorium, the local utility must, uh, one, provide written analysis to demonstrate the 1% arrears exceedance. And we have done that. We've provided information to the public and to the council as well. And then finally, the utility's governing body must verify this exceedance and provide public notice of its intent to consider obtaining relief, receive public comment and vote to approve the exceedance and is accurate in an open public meeting. So we have advertised, um, this meeting and we've had information, again, available to the public for, for their examination. In the event of an affirmative vote on the utility's governing body, you, the city council, then we would thereafter be exempt from the moratorium as outlined in House Bill 5005. In addition to the declaration of discount moratorium, the House bill requires that utility providers must notify customers whose bill is more than 30 days in arrears of the availability of a repayment plan that would amortize repayment of the customer's utility debt over a minimum period of six months and up to a maximum of 24 months, depending on the customer's financial ability to pay. The locality may require the customer attest that they've experienced a financial hardship either resulting from the public health emergency or during the public health emergency. And the city of Waynesboro has, in fact, notified such affected customers and we have a payment plan provision in place. However, the House bill also appropriated $100 million in coronavirus relief funds to provide protection for utility customers that face a financial hardship. And in December, the city of Waynesboro applied for and received about $308,000 in CRF funds. And through our initial late billing notice following the required standard of, of the code, we've distributed more than $10,000 to eligible utility customers. In addition, I think it should be noted that the city council, uh, last year appropriated $175,000 from the city's original cares allocation to the Shindide Department of Social Services to provide utility and rent and mortgage assistance to Waynesboro households facing economic hardship due to the coronavirus pandemic. And through December, more than $115,000 was distributed for households for utilities. And that included electric, gas and the city's water and sewer bills and for rental assistance for past due bills dating back as far as the beginning of the pandemic in March of 2020. And then finally, the city's current CDBG annual action plan calls for the appropriation of approximately $34,000 for basic public assistance for low to moderate income households. So my point being that in addition to having the availability of a payment plan, we have a number of resources that have been made available to assist customers to bring their bills up to date. And in fact, when the, the House Bill 5005 was passed, most of our customers had already come up to current because we had monies available to help them. So running the utility disconnections is certainly, it's, it's time-consuming for the city. It's stressful for both our city staff and certainly for customers. It's not something that we want to do. Unfortunately, disconnections may be the final measure to ensure payment of past due bills. And in the absence of time of payment, then you can have a, a growing past due collection amount, which is undermines our financial stability and as well can create a utility bill for a customer that is growing larger and larger until it's really onerous and difficult to, to bring into currency. We've established multiple resources, as I've just outlined, to assist households who are struggling. And certainly, you know, we would do everything that we could to prevent cutting somebody off if their household is suffering some sort of a, a financial hardship due to the virus. And as long as that, that is communicated to us and if somebody gets their water cut off and at that point they communicate that they have a hardship, then we work with that customer. But otherwise, it would be, um, you know, I think that once you've exhausted those eligibility standards, then we would expect that a customer would pay their bill as they would have prior to the pandemic. So if it is the council's desire, uh, to seek relief from the moratorium, you can do so by, uh, verbal resolution. You would simply have to have a motion, uh, to verify and accept the exceedance as it's been presented to you, uh, that the account of arrearsages is greater than 1% of the utility's, uh, annual revenue budget. Uh, and that would effectively, uh, provide the city relief from the utility, uh, moratorium on disconnection. I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have. I think, um, both Mr. McCormick and Ms. Michaels have worked hard on this particular issue and they could probably present, provide some insight as well.
Anyone have questions for Mr. McCormick, Mr. Shaw, or Ms. Michaels?
Uh, I, I do have a question, uh, for whoever wants to take it, uh, some of it is also just a statement. Um, I, I'm glad to hear that we're sort of stressing, uh, the options that are available, uh, particularly to families and, and households that have been distressed by the COVID, uh, pandemic. Um, because that's what this was about. This was saying, hey, we shouldn't be cutting people off in the midst of a pandemic if they cannot pay a bill because of that situation. Um, but I also understand that with such a large arriage, um, that we need to be able to have the tools to, to help other people get back on, on target with paying their bills as well. Um, something that I think would be, uh, useful for us to have is get some feedback in a couple of months. And, and again, looking back to whoever would be able to collect that data is to say, you know, how have we done in bringing that up to date? How many of the, uh, households that were in arrears, uh, were COVID-related? And how has that been funded through these different programs you highlighted? And then also, how many households were not, uh, found to, to meet the criteria? And, uh, and how have we done bringing those up to date and have we had to move on to, uh, to cutoffs? Um, because again, I, I think the, the goal here is to keep things, you know, get things back up to date, but then also use the appropriate funding mechanisms to, to help those households that have been affected. So I don't know who would be collecting that data or when we might be able to see that.
We collect that data as we speak, that, um, because of the, you know, the nature of the funds that we're using, they all originate from some federal source, that we're required to, to track that information. And so, um, you know, I know in the first round, for instance, that, um, we, we have two billing cycles, I think, a month that we bill half of our customers in one cycle and half in the others. So you bill about 4,500 customers. And in that first billing cycle, when the House bill had taken effect, um, we ended up having to send notices to about 1,100 customers. We had 1,100 customers who were 30 days or more in arrears. And of those 1,100, we had applications from, and in, I should note that in those notices, we provided information about the availability of these funds and a repayment plan. And so we had about 50 applications, uh, from folks who, um, you know, met the standard and we provided, uh, funds of, of about $10,000 or so from one of the sources, mostly from the CRF funds. So, um, so that maybe gives you some sense of, of, you know, what our first billing cycle experience was, and we will continue to track that. Now, of course, we haven't cut anybody off since the House bill was passed because we haven't seen, you know, sought relief from the moratorium. But we can certainly, uh, keep the council apprised as to how the funding is going. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I would also just sort of, uh, ask too that if we could, you know, share those, share that through our social media presence or otherwise that, you know, this program is available and, um, because I, 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 I hearken back to conversations with Don Coffey about the, the personal property tax, you know, the relief, um, that, uh, that might be available or the, uh, senior citizen tax exemption for, for that and that there, there is, uh, certainly more eligible, uh, portions of our population that could take advantage of those programs, but either they don't know about it or they're, they, they're afraid to ask that if there was some way that we could intervene, at least, uh, do all that we can. You know, even, even every, you know, next couple, every, every other week for the next couple of months just to let folks know that that's available. Don't wait until it's cut off.
Well, to be clear, we're required by law to notify a customer whose bill is late. And we, we notify them through an individual notice that the availability of the programs. If you have a, you get a late notice, you're also getting, uh, information about these programs.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Um, with that, we're going to move on to a public hearing, and I just want to announce that this public hearing is to, uh, hear from the citizens, um, Governor, Governor Northern's House Bill five zero zero five Utility Disconnect Moratorium. We're not, uh, uh, into the citizen comment period yet, so this is going to be on House Bill five zero zero five Utility Disconnect Moratorium. On the screen now is the number and the directions on, um, calling in. So if you call 844-844-9200, when prompted, enter the access code 398145, followed by the pound sign. You will hear a Q and A session has started. Hit star si, or press star six. If you would like to be heard or if you'd like to speak, press one, you'll be added in the queue. Once you, uh, press one, they'll let you into the room to present to council. With that, I, uh, hereby open the public hearing for Governor, Governor Northern's House Bill five oh five Utility Disconnect Moratorium.
Mr. Mayor, same, um, situation as the last time. There are, um, two participants in the waiting room currently, so I'm going to open the question and answer now. And if they would like to speak, they can feel free to follow the comments.
Anyone, can I have Mr. McCormick?
No, sir.
Okay.
Actually, hold on. There is one pending question now. So I'll start that if that's your pleasure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, they should be able, you should be able to hear them now.
Thank you so much for taking my question. Um, I'm a Waynesboro resident, and I just have a, a few comments I would like to make, and anyone can feel free to respond to them. Um, many people incarcerated in middle River, Riverdale offenders. And it seems very likely most.
Can they hear me?
I think they, they've been muted, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I don't know if the caller can hear, uh, you, but you may want to provide some direction.
Okay. Uh, if you're, if you're still in the waiting room, we are not, uh, taking public comment at this time. We are doing a public hearing on Governor, Governor Northern's House Bill five oh five Utility Dis, Disconnect Moratorium. We will have public, public comment period coming here, uh, within the next few minutes, but right now we're not in public comment period. If you're talking and you're in the room and you can hear me, you may want to disconnect, recall the number and get back into the queue.
No one else entered during that time, so I'll go ahead and end the question and answer, and that should put that participant into the, back into the waiting room if they'd like to participate again later.
Okay, okay. All right, the, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, enter to relief for Governor Northern's, uh, Utility Disconnect? All right. Did you hear me, Mr. Mayor? I can hear you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
All right. I, I'll open it. I didn't hear you. Did you make a motion or not?
Yes, sir. I did make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Allen, thank you for the motion. Is there a second to Mr. Allen's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, this is, this requires a vote, so all in favor of, uh, extending the city relief to Governor Northern's, uh, House Bill five oh five Utility Disconnect Moratorium, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to be clear, um, we need the motion to, to approve that the exceedance is accurate and that, um, the council is voting to exempt itself under the 1% provision.
All right, so I, I, the, the motion needs to be, we're exempting ourselves?
That you've verified that the exceedance and the numbers that the staff has provided is accurate.
Okay.
And that you're going to proceed with the exemption.
Okay. Um, is there a motion to, uh, verify that the, uh, numbers are, are what they are supposed to be, where it exceeds of 1% of our utility budget?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Uh, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye and show hands.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, this motion carries five oh. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Michaelson. Uh, the next, uh, item number 12 is to hold a public hearing to receive comment on budget ordinance items 13A through J and 14A through K. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, the item number 12 is to hold a public hearing for various budget ordinances contained in item 13 and 14. A formal public hearing is necessary anytime the council desires to amend the fiscal year budget by more than 1%. For the fiscal year 2021, that threshold is $1,113,726. And these ordinance combined total almost $3.4 million. Um, the public hearing also requires an advertisement that was done on January 16 in the News, Virginian. Um, the ordinances are broken up into categories of like kind with ordinances that can be introduced and discussed this evening and then would be moved to your consent agenda on the next meeting. Containing item 13 ordinances that can be introduced, discussed and adopted this eve, evening, contained in item 14. Um, one of the key points on this is that you can act on each of these items, um, in one motion. You, so you can do third, you can open the public hearing, hold the public hearing, and then it's the council's wish. You can do all the items, A through J and 13 together as one motion in the same, all the items 14 through K together in one motion. Um, I know we discussed the ordinances in more detail during the work session, but if you all or council has any questions, um, on any of the individual ones, I'd be happy to answer them now or after the public hearing or during items 13 and 14, whatever your wish would be.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. McCormick? All right. So we're going to open the public hearing for items A through J. And, uh, the public hearing is going to be open. Now, this is for appropriation ordinance items, uh, A through J.
For items 13 and 14, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, for, uh, items 13 and 14, A through J and 14, uh, A through K. And we can, have the same public hearing on both, right? We're just voting separate?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. So, uh, we're opening the public hearing for our appropriation ordinance. If you're in the waiting room, this is not citizen comment period. This is a public comment period for, or a public hearing for our appropriation ordinance. We're not, we're not to the citizen comment period of our meeting yet. So if you want to make a comment regarding the appropriation ordinance that's in the packet, uh, please call 844-844-9200. When prompted to ask for the access code, you'll enter 398145, followed by the pound sign. You will hear question and answering has started. Press star six. If you would like to, uh, you will hear, if you would like to speak, press one. Press one. Uh, while you're in the queue, you'll hear the, uh, audio feed of the meeting. Wait until you are prompted by the moderator to share your comments on appropriation ordinance only, on appropriation ordinances only. So the citizen comment period is now, oh, I mean, the public hearing is now open.
Same situation, Mr. Mayor. There is one participant in the, in the waiting room, and I've opened the question and answer. So if they would like to speak, they can come into the public comment section now.
For the appropriation ordinance?
Yes, sir. And no one has entered at this time.
Okay. So if no one's entered the room, I hereby close the public hearing. And, uh, with the public hearing now closed, do we have a motion, uh, to receive the, or to accept the budget ordinance amendments, uh, 13A through J and 14A, no, 13A through J? Do we have a motion to, uh?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? All right, this, uh, this ordinance carries over till February the 8th, 2021. The, uh, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Uh, now we're going to, uh, I asked for a motion to accept items 14, uh, A through K. Is there a motion to accept items 14A through K?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Any discussion? This motion carries over to our, uh?
This one can be adopted, Mr. Mayor, if that's council's wish.
Okay, thi, this one can be adopted. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've got a first and a second. Is there a motion to approve this? I mean, all in favor of approving this, say aye and raise your hand. This is.
Aye.
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 Okay, is there, uh?
Nays.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, this motion carries five oh. All right, that brings us down to item number 15, communications, correspondence and calendars from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the only item I have this, uh, this evening is a reminder that we have a budget work session this Wednesday at 6:00 PM. That will be a Zoom meeting.
Okay, so thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number 16, which is our citizen comment period. Now, those that are in the waiting room, this is your chance to come in and, and share your thoughts with council. Um, item number 16 is citizen, uh, comment period. If you want to participate, call 844-844-9200. When you enter the room, you will be prompted to enter the, uh, meeting code, not 398145, followed by the pound sign. You will hear question and answer. Press star six. If you would like to speak, press one. You'll be added into the queue. Once you're in the queue, you'll hear an audio feed of the meeting. When it's your turn to speak, uh, the moderator will tell you, you can share your thoughts and concerns with city council. Just remember, when you share your thoughts and concern during the citizen comment period, this is for you to speak to us. We're not going to give you answers. We can't give you answers. So we'll hear your thoughts. If you have concerns that want, uh, you want to bring out to a council member, you can, uh, uh, leave your comment here and let us know, and we'll call you back and talk to you about your concerns. Mr. McCormick?
I am going to open the question and answer mode now. And there were three participants in the, um, waiting room, so if they would like to enter, they should have the ability to do that now.
Okay. If you're wanting to enter, they can press one. Is that right? Are they there?
Yes, sir. And we do have, um, it looks like people that wish to speak, so I'm going to hit next question. And they should be able to participate now.
Okay, you're, you're in the, the council room meeting, so go ahead and, uh, tell us your name and your concern, please.
Yes, sir.
Um, are you on speakerphone?
I think they might be watching a delayed feed, um, so that you may want to mute your TV or your phone. They should be able to say now. Stay here. The, the council room meeting, so go ahead and, uh, tell us your name. Okay, you're, uh, the council room meeting, so go ahead and, uh, tell us your name and- Are you on speakerphone? I think they might be watching at the late time, um, so that you may wanna mute your TV or your phone.
Hello?
Lou?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear you, ma'am? Go ahead and speak.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and talk. I can't hear you guys unless I have the YouTube thing on. I can't hear you all talking at all. Um-
We can hear you.
Council, this is Chanda McGuffin. 6:44 at Warden Lane, Wayne's Row, Virginia. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and talk. I can't hear you guys unless I have the YouTube thing on. I can't hear you all talking at all. Um, we can hear you, council. This is Chanda McGuffin. 6:44 at Warden Lane, Wayne's Row, Virginia. My comment was about the Middle River, um, expansion at the jail and my concern about that and, and the money for taxpayers for us to look at building more of the facilities and shuffling more people into the facility instead of having more preventive programming that we can invest the money into. And that was what my concern is, is that we are shifting money into more incarceration instead of prevention. I believe we can spend the money more wisely to taxpayers, money more wisely in social issues here in the, in the city. It concerns me too that it took us almost 20 years before anything was done to our high school and the, and the, and the facility of the high school, the building of the high school. All of that battling back and forth for years with city council members and the community and the school board. And it seems like you all are, you all are, you know, really enticed by making this regional jail larger. And it, it's not logical to have a bed for 350 facilities, bed, and you have nearly 800 people down there. And so now you're saying, let's make it larger. When it was built for, it wasn't even built for how many were there. It wasn't built for the municipalities that are using it. And we're ending up getting the black end of the expense of the extension. I know it's not just Wayne's Row, it's all the municipalities. But we need to come together in this region and stop just locking people up. If they're, if they're in Middle River Jail, there are some alternatives that we can do, or some changes we can do into the putting them into the Department of Corrections. We've gotta do better. We've gotta be better with that and be more community minded and helping them. He's already said they don't even have psychologists there. They don't even have therapists there. So a lot of mental issues, issues, a lot of mental issues, concerns happening in going to Middle River Jail. And we gotta take that into account. These, th- these are people. These are human beings. They're not cattle. They are people. And we have to put some humanity in the decisions that we're making through our city council leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuffin.
I've moved on to the next-
Hello, uh, I hope you can hear me because I can't hear you. My name is Mitch Narginsky, and I actually am a Stanton resident, uh, but I'm calling in, uh, because I'm also a consultant in the state of Pennsylvania for, uh, reentry council coalition building. And so I wanted to address the expansions of the Middle River Regional Jail. And hopefully you guys can hear me. I don't know how this works, but let me just go ahead and say it. Um, so Mostly Architects were, uh, it's a four-topic company that drafted the very community-based corrections plan that the authority board is relied on to justify the expansion. But the whole problem with this is that, um, the jail simply is a repository, repository for our criminal justice failures as, uh, as a community. And the reason I say this is because if we were simply able to, uh, lobby for legislative change or to put pressure on the Department of Corrections to move the 300-plus people that are currently being housed at Middle River Regional Jail, just simply waiting for transportation to other facilities run by the Department of Corrections, that would immediately drop our numbers to a more sustainable and, uh, serviceable population at the jail and wouldn't even require the expansion. So, um, even the criminal justice planner for the Rocking, um, Buckingham-Harrisonburg Uni- municipality questions whether or not is it a prudent financial investment for them to sink more money into a correction-based model that simply doesn't work, and that's proven by over 70% recidivism rate at our jail. So we are actually not going to increase, um, public safety or the, the population of human beings there that are, the majority of them need expensive, um, mental health treatment and substance use disorder treatment. Uh, and if, if, uh, we need to control the current population for another three years until the actual jail is built, I don't understand why we can't put those same measures in place, uh, so that we don't need the expansion at all. So if we're repeating this model that will ensure that if we build it, our current criminal justice system will fill it. So while this is not uniquely, um, not a unique problem specific to our area, this happens across the country, there is data out there and model, evidence-based models that show that we can do our whole criminal justice system differently. Our Commonwealth Attorney's Office don't believe that, um, we should expand the jail. They wanna see, uh, pre-trial diversion programs and alternatives to incarceration. And I hope you consider that before you, um, commit any more money to a system that is inevitably, uh, just gonna repeat the hand that it, it does not. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, hello?
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 Hello, can you hear me?
Anyway, my name's, uh, Andrea Jackson, and I, I prefer not to, uh, give the address. I live in Ward A because there are some crazy, I guess, the Patriots, yep. And so, uh, um, I had a few things I'd like to say. One is that this meeting was entirely too long. It's ridiculous. It seems that every time there's an important issue that the demands, you know what I mean, the citizens, the comment on it, y'all overload the meeting and has it up to like 9 o'clock. Like y'all have like five public hearings. This is ridiculous. Y'all have to meet in the month. I don't understand how y'all didn't spread this out or you know what I mean, work y'all schedules, you know what I mean, collide, make this more balanced. And then also, I have an issue, you know what I mean, with y'all not being able to have their meetings, uh, in live and in public. I know that is constant, you know what I mean? I get that. You know what I mean, when kids have to go to school, when everybody else goes to work, I don't understand why y'all can't, you know what I mean, uh, meet in person. And I understand that maybe the facility at this, uh, the city council is not appropriate, but like the school board, you could have it in the high school auditorium where people can spread out, where y'all can spread out on the stage and people, you know, you can get their opinions heard, you know what I mean? And they might have seen, but hey, you know what I mean, these people have come out and they want, you know what I mean, their voice to be heard. You know what I mean? I think that this is a tactic that y'all use. Y'all don't want people, you know, to confront y'all about issues that is uncomfortable. And so then when it comes to, uh, Middle River Jail, you know what I mean, like, I think, you know, y'all think y'all are pieced split and y'all gonna go ahead and, uh, approve this behind people's backs. I don't understand how y'all are gonna approve this and borrow this budget and not have a public hearing on it before February the 2nd, first of all. And then I just don't understand, like, uh, other people have said before, it's that first, the, what I'm gonna say is, it's that the superintendent of the, uh, Middle River Jail did not do a good job in presenting his case. And when y'all did ask questions, he did not answer. Because he knew that, uh, the answers wasn't that. The people who are at Middle River Jail, half of them are, you know, that's not their first assistance. This is all like, it's like they, like, um, didn't pay their fines or like their, uh, uh, their, it's like on their probation, you know what I'm saying? These people are locked into the system. And so therefore they keep feeding into the system. He doesn't wanna tell y'all that, you know what I mean? Because he wants to, uh, grow the, uh, jail because people have to pay, so this is about money. And I don't understand how, first of all, Wayne's Row doesn't have a lot of money. So how are y'all gonna borrow budget, sneak into a jail, but y'all can't spend money on the youth or anything productive to make the town better? And so I think, you know, what you should do is, you know what I mean, take a step back and really, you know, look at, you know, this situation, how, what, really get some answers. Because, uh, the superintendent did not give y'all any answers. And I can't, he should go back and get the answers. He shouldn't just be cosigning on this, just the people on the advisory board. And y'all should be, be bold on it because he's giving the OJ. Y'all need to do some research and really figure out what is the best thing for the community. Because you know what I mean, like, mental health is a issue. But what they're doing is, you know, putting mental health work on there. The man says they don't even have a full-time psychiatrist, and he's not even interested in the people, uh, hiring a full-time psychiatrist. Or you know, he's really about the people's mental illness or mental health. He just wants the bid up there so he can pick more people up there so they can get more money. And so y'all really need to, uh, to evaluate this. And I don't want, you know what I mean, this to be some underhanded thing that y'all might sneak off behind closed doors and approve of. Y'all need to have a public hearing about this. So we can say, if y'all will borrow millions of dollars about this, we need to have a public care about it, about what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Um, yes, my name is Sharon Fitz, and I am a resident of Wayne's Row. I'm not sure if you all can hear me, just, there's no way for me to know. But I do wanna say, um, start by saying incarceration is not rehabilitation. And it seems to me that there is a, you know, a focus of expanding a, uh, Middle River Jail when clearly incarceration is not working. If the numbers are increasing, then it seems to me that you all need to consider a different avenue to address the needs of the people who keep rotating through those doors. Um, you know, there's, when I'm listening, I hear you all talking, and I don't hear any humanity within your, in your voices. It's as if you're focused only on the numbers and the dollars, but not the people. And, uh, there are a lot of ways that you can use that money to address the need for preventative services as opposed to continuing to pay, um, to incarcerate people. So I, I just, that's really what I want to make sure. I hope I can be heard because there's no way for me to know.
Mike, did she say her name was Ms. Fitz? Thank you, Ms. Fitz.
That was the last caller in the Q and A, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Alright, so citizen comment-
The meeting session is over.
Citizen comment period is over. We're gonna move to item number 17, which is a closed session. The city manager has requested a closed session. Is there a motion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I move this, uh, meeting to be recessed and that the city council of Wayne's Row immediately reconvene in a closed meeting for the following purposes. To discuss the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including the discussion of terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A29 of the State Code. The sub- subject matter of the meeting is the lad property development.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there any discussion?
I think this requir- requires a roll call vote.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ms. Bortles, can you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Mayor, let me help you with that.
Okay.
Mr. Allen?
Uh?
Mr. Henderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hos- Dr. Hostetter?
Aye.
Mr. Short?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Meeting is officially moved to closed session. Meeting is officially moved to closed session.
The certification?
Um, I have it as a... Yeah, where- whereas the, uh, we convened the closed session.
Yeah, it's a certification.
Okay, it says resolutions, certification.
So, Mr. Mayor, as well, when, after you conclude that and certify the content of the closed session, but before you adjourn, if you could pause and let me, um, conclude follow-up matter with citizen comment period.
Okay.
Yep, we're live again, by the way.
Um, ready? Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the following consideration. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2 dash 3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the City Council that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, um, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Is there a motion that we heard the open session and clarify the closed media, uh, closed session?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shaw, can you give us a roll call vote?
Sure, I can. Mr. Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Henderson.
Aye.
Dr. Hustedden.
Aye.
Mr. Short.
Aye.
And Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
We're back in the open session.
The session's back open. Uh, Mr. Hamp, did you have some closing statements you wanted to make?
Well, yes, sir. Um, items related to citizen comment period. In this virtual environment, we're advised by Ms. Michelson that we need to acknowledge, um, citizens are able to submit in writing public comment period. And Ms. Michelson advises that it's important for the council to acknowledge those written comments that we've received and note that they will be included in the record of the meeting. So in a summary fashion, um, Ms. Kathleen Temple, um, has submitted, uh, comments relating or sharing the opposition to jail expansion. Ms. Linda Meyer, actually, Dr. Linda Meyer, uh, has shared comments opposing jail expansion. Mr. Peter Van Acker, uh, has submitted comments, I think, encouraging thoughtful examination and consideration of jail expansion. Um, Ms. Mary Sullivan opposes, um, jail expansion and supports prevention programs. Um, Mr. Tom McDonald has submitted comments related to membership on the cultural commission. And finally, um, Ms. Natalie Stickell, um, opposes jail expansion. And those, those communications are available in their entirety, um, in the clerk's office and will be included in the record of the meeting. Thank you, sir.
Right. Um, Mr. Hamp, by the lo- I, and I apologize, I meant to add those at the end because I've got a list here also. Uh, I want to include Ms. Jennifer Lewis opposes the, uh, jail expansion. Arlene Jackson Dig opposes the jail expansion. And Ray Lynn Kasdan opposes the jail expansion. So, th- thank you, Ms. Michelson and Mr. Hamp for bringing that to my attention. So with, with that, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
I would second it.
I thank you. Mr. Short, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Motion carries five oh.